I would like to call the Monday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ask everyone to please arise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening and those watching us from home as well. I will run through tonight's agenda real quick. First item will be the consent agenda. Second item will be a public hearing for rezoning for Remington Place. Item three will be a planned development concept plan for Remington Place. Item four will be a public hearing for a Unified Development Code text amendment. Item five will be another public hearing for a Unified Development Code text amendment. Item six will be a final plat for gardens at Colonial Highlands. Item seven will be a planned unit development final plan for Jefferson Corner self-storage. Item eight will be election of officers. Item nine, other business, and item ten will be adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Say.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to run through the procedures for it and I put them out in my sight. Oh, well, I should know them.
Is it behind you or is it...
No, but I'll open the public hearing. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney. Then staff will make their presentation. The applicant will give them their opportunity to make their presentation. Then I will ask for witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed. Then I will have general discussion among the commissioners. I will close the public hearing and then we will consider it for a vote for a recommendation. So with that, I'll bring you back to my agenda. And I'm going to open both public hearings for the rezoning and the planned development concept plan. We'll hear those simultaneously and then vote on those separately. So I'll open the public hearing for the rezoning, RZ oh seven dash two zero dash seven three nine six for Remington Place and the planned development concept plan, PDC zero seven two zero seven three nine seven. If I could get the exhibits from our attorney on both of those.
Yes. Chairman Graham, I offer the following exhibits into the record for RZ zero seven two zero seven three nine six. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July twenty-five, two thousand and twenty. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code ordinances by reference. And eight, two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan by reference. And for PDC zero seven two zero seven three nine seven, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July twenty-five, two thousand and twenty. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code ordinances by reference. And eight, two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Wright?
All right.
Make the presentation this evening on those two items.
Thank you, Chair Graham and Commissioners. Before you this evening are two requests for rezoning and a planned development concept plan for Remington Place. The subject property consists of two point nine five acres and is located approximately three hundred feet west of Seven Highway between Southwest Clark Road and Southwest Meadow Ridge Drive, which is located west of the South Seven Plaza Shopping Center and east of the Villas of Autumn, Autumn Bend apartment and townhouse community. The first request before you this evening is for a rezoning of the subject property from GB General Business to MF eighteen PD, which is high-density multifamily and a planned development. The MF eighteen zoning is required due to the building type and not the requested density, which per the concept plan is thirteen point five six units per acre, which does fall within the MF fourteen or moderate-density zoning classification. However, per the U D, the UDC, mid-rise apartment buildings are only permitted in the MF eighteen zoning district and with a planned development, which is what the applicant is requesting this evening. The second request is for a PUD, sorry, a PD, concept plan for a mid-rise apartment building on a two point nine fi, two point nine five acre property. The concept plan does include one building that is three stories and contains forty dwelling units. Access to the site will be provided from both Southwest Clark Road and Southwest Meadow Ridge Drive on both the north and east ends of the property. This does accommodate a single multi-story building on one property as a mid-rise apartment building. The site does meet all applicable development standards for the apartment building type except for the lot area, which the site exceeds the maximum two-acre size, as the site is two point nine five acres, which would be the first of four modifications that are being requested under the concept plan. All other requirements are met, including setbacks and frontage widths, and both the building coverage and building height are well below the maximum limits for the building type. In addition to the larger lot size, the three other modifications are provided on page eight of the staff report. The first two are related to parking, including a request to modify the minimum parking standard from two spaces per unit to one point five spaces per unit. This would reduce the parking required from eighty spaces to sixty spaces, as the units are proposed to be age-restricted as senior independent living. The applicant has provided justification for this request in their letter on page twenty-nine of the packet. The second parking request is related to bicycle parking, which requires one space per unit. The applicant is proposing to provide ten spaces, which would be one space per four units. The fourth and final request is related to fencing. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot vinyl privacy fence along the west property line to create a buffer between the development and the existing townhomes to the west. The area between the north, the, sorry, the north end of the building and Southwest Clark Road is considered the front of the property, and according to the UDC fence code requirements, fences over four feet are not permitted in the front yard. However, since the property, since the fence is proposed to be along a boundary and serve as a buffer, staff believes that that request is warranted. Per the MF eighteen zoning district standards, developments less than five acres must provide at least ten percent of their site as active open space, unless there is access to existing open space, which in this case there is not. Therefore, the site has provided its own active open space, which has been cross-hatched on the site plan. Twenty-seven point five percent of the site meets the open space requirement by providing a pocket park and a community garden along the south and east sides of the building. That does include an outdoor patio, landscaped walking path that connects to building entrances, the community garden, parking streets, as well as the community garden and other amenities that provide for both active and passive recreation space. In addition to the exterior amenities, the, there will be numerous interior amenities that will provide year-round active and passive recreation as well. Conceptual architectural elevations have been provided, which show a three-story building with a little under seventeen thousand square foot ground floor, which amongst the three floors were totaled to just under fifty thousand square feet. The ground floor will be brick. Upper floors include a mix of brick and cement or lapped siding, and then also cement shingle, fiber cement shingles also in the gabled areas for accent. The building accessory structures and the site must meet the residential design standards, which will be reviewed in greater detail with a final plan and site plan designer view. A conceptual landscape plan has also been provided, which accommodates the required landscape buffer along the east property line adjacent to general business zoning, which would include a six-foot vinyl privacy fence, as well as a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. Based on the buffering, parking, and lot area, the site is required a minimum of six hundred plant units. Staff did review the request under the rezoning review criteria and finds that the request is in compliance with the future land use map as a mixed-density neighborhood, which is intended to accommodate a variety of housing types. The project creates an appropriate transition between the more intensive commercial zoning frontage along the Seven Highway frontage, as well as complementary to these multifamily to the west. This also provides additional households within close proximity to other commercial use, commercial retail and service uses, including many that are within walking distance to the site. As referenced in the staff report, the existing zoning has been in place since at least the early nineteen seventies. Since that time, the only development plan that has been approved for the property was a self-storage facility in nineteen ninety-five, which did not develop. And lastly, staff did review the PD concept plan under review criteria and also finds that the proposed plan meets the goals of the comprehensive plan by integrating housing choice within existing neighborhoods and corridors, particularly as infill near and adjacent to corridor reinvestment areas. Requested modifications are based on site constraints, the uniqueness of the land use as an independent senior living facility, as well as adjacent land uses, which will provide additional open space landscaping and buffering for the site. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning and approval of the concept plan with three staff conditions, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Wright? All right. Don't look like it. All right. Is the applicant here to make their presentation? I'll need you to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Are you ready, please? Do you saw me swear in the testimony you're about to give in this case to get the truth out of God?
I do. My name is Patricia Jensen, and I am with the Ross Threats Law Firm with addresses at forty-five ten Bellevue, Suite three hundred, Kansas City, Missouri. Here today on behalf of the team, it's a little awkward always presenting en masse, so I always feel muffled now. Here today presenting on behalf of the team in regards to the Remington Place development. And with me is Tim Schulte, Matt Kreit, and then our engineering person in case you have any questions. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that we sent to staff. It is nearly duplicative of what Matt just presented, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that with you because you've already seen it. If you just go to the photos, we have some photographs of the site, so you can see the vacant piece of property, both looking north and looking south from the two streets. And then this next slide shows the adjacent commercial strip shopping center that's located to the east, as well as another view looking south at that strip mall. And then the next slide shows the apartment complex west of the site, and then that's the, another entrance looking east to Seven Highway. We've worked well with your staff. We've appreciated working through all of the issues. We're here to stand for questions. It's really a good development that proposes a good use for this property. As you can see, it's been undeveloped forever, and it presents a good use of senior housing for the city of Blue Springs. We don't have any objection to any of the conditions that are contained in your staff report, so we would ask for you, really, it's approving a downzoning of the property from the current commercial zoning district to the multifamily district, and then approval of the concept plan. We're available to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we would ask you to approve it.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Jensen? Yes, Commissioner Banks?
Thank you. Ms. Jensen, I do have a question. It pertains to whether I will look to rezone, so it has a, so I have a question on, it's going to be a multi-story for independent senior living, right?
Correct.
So you're asking me to rezonate for it to have the apartments?
Correct.
And then you're going to go for MHDC funds?
Correct. There's a tax credit application that we find.
Correct. It's sub, the senior housing subject to whether you get MHDC funds?
Um, yes. Yeah. We have to have the MHDC funds.
And have you looked into when you had to apply for that funds because you want to start next year?
They've already applied, I believe. I, I can have them come up and talk. Either Matt or, or Tim can come up and talk, but they are well aware of the schedule that has to be done.
Okay. And you're planning to start, if I rezonate, then you're planning to start next year?
Yeah. The application deadline...
I'll need you to, if you're going to do testimony, come up and be sworn in.
Yeah, you got to come up.
I'm sorry. It has pertained to my voting, so I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I'll just need you to be sworn in and then state your name and address as well, so...
Sure.
You saw me swear in the testimony you're about to give in this case to get the truth out of God?
I do.
Do you have the name of the judge?
Uh, yeah. Tim Schulte, S.C.H.U.L.T.E. Address is twenty-five East Twelfth Street, Suite two oh one, Kansas City, Missouri. So yes, we, we do intend to apply for low-income housing tax credits through Missouri Housing Development Commission. The next round of funding, the application deadline is October thirtieth, so we're going to be working towards that deadline applying for tax credits. Their review is usually a few months, and so if we are allocated credits on this project, we would commence construction probably Q-two of next year.
Okay. And on this, as far as the rezoning for the apartments, will this be senior housing, independent senior housing, are you going to restrict it by age then and keep it?
Yes.
If I rezonate this?
Age fifty-five and above, yes.
Okay. So you're going to have eighty percent, so, because it's, you're looking at children in there then?
No, they're, it's age fifty-five and above.
Correct.
They are...
Eighty percent has to be over fifty-five. And then otherwise, if you will, you're going to keep children.
Yeah.
They could be younger, but no children. Okay.
Right. One hundred percent of the apartments must be leased by age fifty-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Okay. That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Okay. Ms., I'm, for Mr. Schulte, would you get your company name as well for the record?
Uh, yeah. Old Town Partners.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners for Mr. Schulte or Ms. Jensen?
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask counsel, Jensen, is, what was the reason for the one point five on the parking spaces?
I think based upon the fact that it's going to be senior...
If you could speak into the mic.
Sorry.
Ms. Jensen.
Based upon the fact that it's going to be senior, age fifty-five and above, it's not our experience that, that our tenants or those types of tenants have more than one car, so the average is one and a half cars, and that's based upon our experience.
Okay. Thank you. I tend to not agree with that, but if that's your experience, then I'll take that as testimony. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the witnesses or for the applicant? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition for these petitions? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back up for comments, questions, discussion among the commissioners on the record.
I'd like to be on the record, Mr. Chair, that I really want to make sure that if they're going to say these are senior housing, which we've been asked before, that they are for senior housing. I don't know if we can make that a condition for rezoning.
That would be a question for our attorney.
The reason I'm bringing that up is because we're also asking to reduce the parking...
Right.
...which affects...
Matt, do you believe that falls within the criteria?
It is, in the past, we have not conditioned housing type or whoever the tenant is into our concept plan as part of that. We don't have a land use category specifically based on that. It's just multifamily. So that would be, I don't believe that that is something that would be appropriate to be conditioned. However, we, we've approved a number of senior projects in recent years, and they have all built what they said they were going to build, so we have not had an issue with, with that in the past.
Can I answer your question?
We haven't had to realign the parking quite as much though.
That's one thing that I, that I'm also concerned about is the parking, the one point five. I mean, if you have people that are...
Yeah.
...coming to visit these people, or if they have, you know, if they have, you know, if they're a couple, I mean, if they have more than one car...
Have we...
Yes, I believe we...
Had that's instance where we've altered parking in the past?
We made a similar condition with Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace a couple of years ago. We, we've reduced the, the parking for them to one point five spaces per unit. We did the same with Calamar Senior Living as well. There were concerns about the parking at White Oak if it would be sufficient, and there was a condition put in there that if it, if the parking lot is full and it's determined that they don't have enough parking, that, that they would have to add additional parking. So they showed overflow parking in case they needed that in the future, if for some reason the number of vehicles turned out to be more than they anticipated.
Is that something that we can see with the, what a plan would be, like a plan B if they do have to add on parking?
Do they have someone else that they have to cons...
Ms. Jensen, do you have anyone else that could speak to the parking question?
I do want to address a couple of your comments that have come along. We have no objection to placing an age restriction, and we can place it on the, the concept plan because that's what we're building. So I believe, if you want to come up and introduce yourself...
Well, she's here. Can I ask a quick question?
Uh, well, let me get this gentleman sworn in and on the record first.
You saw me swear in the testimony you're about to give in this case to get the truth out of God?
Yeah.
Hi. My name is Benjamin Ross. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Engineering Surveys and Services, and we're the civil engineer on this project. We've worked with the developers on many projects throughout the Missouri and the southeast United States. I've been with the firm twenty-five years. We've done many projects very similar to this, even this exact same building in other communities, and it's our experience that one and a half parking spaces per unit is adequate. My grandmother's a hundred and one years old, and she lives in an independent facility, and she doesn't have a car at all. So some of the residents won't have a vehicle at all. It's a combination of one and two-bedroom units, and we don't think very many folks will have two cars. So that's why in many communities, one and a half has worked out great. If you did want a plan B, there's space, the, the lot is bigger than what's required, and I think there's space down here, and we can reconfigure this area and add more parking if we had to, but like I said, in my professional opinion, additional parking would not be required or needed by the people there.
Okay. Commissioner Banks, did you want to ask me this?
Yes. Is this going to be based on income?
The low-income housing tax credits?
Yes.
Yes, it is based on income.
Because there's only four in Blue Springs. That's why I ask.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's affordable senior units.
Affordable housing. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, could you provide us your address, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My office is eleven thirteen Fay Street in Columbia, Missouri.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ross or Ms. Jensen?
I think we could have a condition that, that says something along the lines that if there, if it turns out from experience that there's not enough parking, there's areas we can add to it to address that issue.
Okay. And you'd be fine with that if that came up? Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on the record? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close both of the public hearings, and I would entertain a motion on the rezoning.
I guess since I've been outspoken, I'll make a motion. So I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of Remington Place, RZ dash zero seven dash two zero div, dash seven three nine six, and I trust that if there's additional parking needed, that they will add it?
All right. I have a motion to approve the rezoning. Do I have a second?
So...
I have a second from Commissioner Peel, motion from Commissioner Banks. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
This is a motion to approve the rezoning. Plenary Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Roar?
Aye.
Chair Graham?
Aye. All right. So that passes unanimously. We will send a recommendation of approval to the city council for their August seventeenth meeting at six o'clock. Next item is the planned unit development concept plan for Remington Place. I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the planned development concept plan, PDC dash zero seven dash two zero dash seven three nine seven with the three staff conditions for Remington Place.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Honeycutt. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote as well.
Plenary Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Roar?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Chair Graham?
Aye. So that passes, and we will send a recommendation of approval to the city council's August seventeenth meeting at six o'clock as well. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing for Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT dash zero six dash two zero three seven one. I'm going to open that public hearing and ask for our attorney for exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July twenty-five, two thousand and twenty. Four, location map of donation bins within the city. Five, names and addresses of property owners and business owners that own or house temporary donation collection bins. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property and business owners. Seven, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference. And eight, two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Mallon?
Thank you, Chairman Graham and members of the Plenary Commission. These are amendments proposed to modify the Unified Development Code, amendments specifically for various sections and subsections of Title IV, chapters four oh one to four eleven of the Unified Development Code for the city of Blue Springs code of ordinances related to temporary donation collection bins. The current UDC, Unified Development Code, regulations categorize donation bins, which are the, kind of the colored boxes you see in shopping centers and things like that that are intended for the drop-off of clothing and other similar household items, and certain companies are a little bit more prevalent in the business than others. You often see the yellow ones throughout the site or city, which are a Planet Aid box, and so that's specifically what the boxes that we are talking about this evening. So the current Unified Development Code categorizes those types of bins as a recycling collection station and lumps those in with the accessory use section of the code, and then makes those subject to the accessory use criteria. Recently, there's been a desire to further regulate these donation bins for clothing and other similar household items throughout the city, as the city has experienced an increase in illegal dumping adjacent to and around these bins throughout the city. And so city council and city staff is proposing some, or city council wanted to see some stronger regulations that would give code enforcement and city staff the ability to clean these sites up a little bit quicker. that would give, uh, code enforcement and City Staff the ability to clean these sites up a little bit quicker uh, than the current, uh, UDC and Property Maintenance Code allows us to do. These proposed amendments would create a new temporary use, uh, entitled, uh, donation collection bin and provide for the regulations for the placement, operation, maintenance, and enforcement of these bins throughout the city. The proposed changes I will go through right now, um, and, uh, then have some other photos to, uh, share with you. Um, so we would be adding the, the underlined text here under four oh five oh seven oh, temporary uses. And we would add number six, the donation collection bin. And then provide the requirements for the placement of those. And I will highlight a few of these. Uh, under number one, no person shall place, use, or operate a donation collection bin without first obtaining a temporary use permit pursuant to the Unified Development Code. Uh, so that would be a new regulation. Currently, as an accessory, accessory use, they're allowed to be placed anywhere without any kind of permitting. This would establish a new temporary use permit application to allow these to be on a property. Um, these would be, uh, valid for a period of one year and would need to be renewed after that one-year timeframe is over. Um, the director may approve the renewal of the permit for subsequent one-year periods, subject to a payment of a new fee. And if the use has and continues to fully comply with all of the requirements set forth in this, uh, in the new regulations. Uh, the third sentence in that, of this paragraph, which is an approved temporary use permit, may be repealed at the request of the property owner during the one-year time period. That was a suggestion that was offered during our Development Advisory Commission meeting, uh, in order to help a property owner uh, who has one of these bins on their property, uh, and wants it removed. This would help, um, that property owner have the authority to be able to do that. So, that was a suggestion by the, uh, the DAC that staff incorporated into the regulations. Number two, uh, at a minimum, each bin shall display the name, address, and telephone number for the person, business, or organization responsible for placing and maintaining that bin. Uh, oftentimes, uh, let me take a step back. Oftentimes, the company that is, uh, maintains and operates the, the bin is not the same as the underlying property owner. And so, there's a bin operator and a property owner. Uh, and so, I just wanted to make that clear, that, uh, it has to have the information of the operator for the bin. Uh, number three, only one bin is permitted per lot and shall not exceed two hundred square feet and be, uh, less than six feet in height and be made of a durable metal material. Uh, number four, no donation collection bin shall be located on property utilized for residential land uses. Uh, this was also modified in between the Development Advisory Commission meeting and Planning Commission. Uh, staff had originally proposed that language to be, uh, on properties zoned for residential land uses. Uh, but during, uh, the meeting, it was, uh, correctly pointed out that we have a number of these bins on property that is zoned for residential land use but isn't utilized as a residential land use such as a church property. We have church properties throughout the city, uh, that is zoned to say, single family or for two-family, but it actually has a church on it. So, we have a number of land uses like churches, schools, things like that, that can be located in a residentially-zoned district or on a residentially-zoned property, but the property itself is not being utilized for residential purposes. So, we changed that language to say if it's being utilized for residential purposes. So, this would prohibit these types of bins from being in a subdivision, an apartment complex, or anything of that nature. Uh, no, number five, each bin shall be located on an improved durable surface and shall not reduce the number of required parking spaces, uh, or available parking spaces below the minimum number required. So, uh, they can't get rid of a parking space if they're already at their minimum being provided. And number six, further identifies where these bins can't, cannot be placed on the property uh, due to safety reasons such as within a visibility triangle, within a required building or parking setback, access easement driveway, three feet of a fire hydrant, any fire lane, within a landscape buffer in part, or, uh, any portion of a public rideaway, or, um, on an undeveloped parcel of land that does not have a principal use or structure. So, one of these bins could not be placed on a vacant piece of property. They have to be associated with a primary use. The application of requirements for the temporary use permit shall include the following. Under number seven, uh, an authorization form signed by the property owner or a property owner's agent authorizing the placement of the bin on private property. As I mentioned previously, currently, under the UDC regulations, there is no required property owner sign-off with the city. So, these bins sometimes just appear on property, uh, without the property owner's consent. And so, as part of this temporary use permit application, the property owner has to sign off on this application by the bin operator. And under subsection B of that, they also have to provide an authorization form signed by the property owner or property owner's agent authorizing removal by the city of the bin, its contents, and any items dumped outside the bin upon reasonable notice that the maintenance requirements specified in subsection B, which is above, uh, have not been met, or below, I'm sorry, have not been met. So, this gives the authority for the city to come in. If the city finds that, uh, it's not being maintained in a proper manner, that the city can come in and remove the bin. And then, um, at the cost of the, of the bin operator or the property owner. So, currently, in our, in our property maintenance violations, if there's illegal dumping outside, the city notifies the property owner and the bin operator. Then we have to go through the property maintenance, uh, violation process, which can often be up to thirty days for the initial, uh, time before they go to court. That can often get continued, or that gets cleaned up, and then the next time there's illegal dumping, it starts the clock over again. And so, what this provision allows is the city to remedy or abate the situation in a much quicker timeframe. The maintenance requirements, um, are outlined under B, which are, and I'll go through these individually. Each bin shall be serviced and emptied as needed or within twenty-four hours of a request by the property owner or the city. Each bin shall be enclosed by use of a one-way receiving door and locked so that the contents of the bin may not be accessed by anyone other than those responsible for retrieving the contents. Number three, each bin shall be clearly display a sign indicating that no donated items, garbage, or other debris is to be left outside of the bin. And number four, uh, upon completion of the temporary use, the bin shall be removed, the site shall be cleaned, and all evidence of its use removed. So, if, um, the bins stop being used for, uh, the donation of household goods and clothing, then the bin needs to be removed. Uh, in other words, uh, if the bin operator goes out of business and it stops being used as that and becomes more of just a place where people dump their clothes and not as a place where people donate their clothes, then the bin's gotta go away. Uh, the violations and penalties, um, it should be unlawful for a property owner or donation bin owner to place, use, permit, or allow a donation collection bin to be placed that, or operated that is not in compliance with this section. And unlawful for the bin owner to fail to maintain and keep in good repair any donation and collection bin. And to main, shall be unlawful for them to not maintain, maintain the area around them. And, uh, the violation, uh, shall be as authorized, uh, under section one hundred, uh, point zero eight zero A of the overall Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Um, the other proposed amendment in chapter four hundred, there are two more, uh, in order to, uh, create this new use and to, uh, allow for the regulations is to, um, put in a clause that states any, under the nonconformities, that any nonconforming donation collection bin shall, on or before January one of two thousand twenty-one, be made to comply with all the provisions of this chapter. And what that means is that we are not going to, if this gets approved, that any existing clothing donation bin that is out, uh, in the city today, that, um, well, all of them would not have a temporary use permit because that was not a requirement before, uh, this new amendment. So, that all of the temp, all of the donation bins would have to come in and get a temporary use permit, um, prior to January one of two thousand twenty-one. And there would be no grandfather, uh, legal nonconforming status, uh, granted to any existing bins that are out in the city, uh, today. They would all have to comply with this, uh, by that January one deadline. And then, in chapter four eleven, under the interpretation, uh, which is also the definitions section, uh, we've provided a definition for the donation collection bin, which is a portable receptacle or container made of metal, steel, or any other material designed or intended to be for the collection and temporary storage of donated clothing or other salvageable personal property. This term does not include solid waste collection processing facilities or recycling collection bins for the collection of recyclable materials as defined herein. So, we're trying to separate these out as a new use from the use they've been, uh, historically categorized at. Uh, the staff reviewed the proposed UDC amendments against the, uh, criteria in the Unified Development Code for a text amendment to said code, which are under four oh three oh two oh. And staff finds that, uh, this proposed amendment meets all of those criteria and will help, uh, foster the public health, safety, and welfare, uh, and a, uh, well-maintained, uh, and built environment throughout the city. And, uh, will help the city, uh, or provide the city with additional authority to have these sites cleaned up uh, and any offending bins removed in a much quicker process than the current code allows. With that, staff does recommend approval of the proposed amendments. Uh, these proposed amendments, as I mentioned, did go before the Development Advisory Commission. That meeting was on, uh, July thirtieth, and they voted unanimously to approve or recommend approval of these proposed amendments. Uh, and I did mention the two suggestions that they had during that meeting, which staff rolled into the proposed, uh, text amendment before you. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mallon? Commissioner Banks?
Mr. Mallon, I do have a question or a few, couple. He's gonna go over-
Lanning Schumicon?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Now it is.
Thank you. Yeah, method muffled. It's even worse. Um, how are you gonna notify the people that have those now?
Uh, as part of this public hearing, we did a windshield survey where we drove around, um, as many parts of the city as we could find. And we asked for some help in doing that, and we got some outside help too. And we were able to identify a number of them, and we sent notice to the ones that we were able to find. We sent notice to the bin operators, to the property owners, as well as the businesses that were on the site.
Okay. And I gather the codes department's gonna regulate these?
Yes. Yes, our codes department, codes enforcement, codes administration division would be the ones that would administer these and-
And then, one more question. If you have, if they don't do anything with it, how are we gonna recoup? Cause it's gonna cost Blue Springs money. Um, so are they gonna have to pay to recoup re- Blue Springs for the cost of main picking up the bin or picking up the things or?
There's multiple ways that that can be handled. If, if the, the city will charge a, a permit fee for these, um, uh, for the temporary use permit. So, when they are initially applied for, we will collect a fee, and then each year when they are renewed, we will collect a fee. So, that should help, uh, offset some of that cost, especially if we, uh, remove one of the bins and then have to store it at a city facility for a certain amount of time. Uh, under the current property maintenance codes, if the city, uh, goes through that thirty-day process that I mentioned previously, um, and then, uh, does get in order to abate the property and, uh, they still don't comply with it, the city can send out a contractor, uh, to have it removed. And then, we, uh, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, we can either send a bill to the, the owner of that property or if that bill's not, uh, paid, I believe we can place a lien on the property as well.
And I think we also discussed, um, if a citation is issued, that could possibly be part of a, um, restitution order from municipal court.
Right.
Um, and also, I think we discussed maybe providing for that in the, um, application form.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we've, we've definitely, um, some things are gonna be put in the ordinance and some, some things will be put in the authorization forms that the property owners have to sign. Um, not only allowing the bin to be on the property, but allowing the city to come and collect it if it's not maintained property or properly. So, there are different ways that the city will be able to recoup that cost, yes.
Well, then I have one last question. I promise. Okay, so if we collect the bin, are we gonna charge a storage fee? Do you like if the people that own the bin wanna come pick it up?
Uh, I don't know if we- Uh, I don't know if we have fully ironed out that process yet of how long we would hold it and if we would, uh, charge a fee to hold it on our property. I believe that's something we can further as policy figure out how best and equitably to do that. Uh, if, if we have to pick up a bin and bring it to a property and it sits for a day or two, we probably wouldn't charge them a whole lot of money. But if it sits there for thirty days, sixty days, then we either have the ability to dispose of it, uh, or we could try to recoup that cost, yes. So, that's what I believe Jackie was referring to, that we would put language in that authorization form that, that specifies what types of, uh, penalties they could incur.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? All right, thanks, sir. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Discussion among the commissioners on the record. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion. Not all at once.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move to, uh, approve Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT zero six two zero seven three seven one.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Banks. Any further discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Roar?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Chair Graham?
Aye. So, that motion carries, and we will send that recommendation of approval to the City Council for their August seventeenth meeting at six o'clock. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for another Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT dash zero seven dash two zero dash seven three eight two. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And this one, in light of our small attendance tonight, I would like to see that one, um, continue to our next meeting. If I could get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks?
I'd be happy to make that motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT dash zero seven dash two zero seven three eight two to our August twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion to continue to our August twenty-fourth meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Uh, any other discussion on that motion? This will be our, do I need a roll call vote on it or just?
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll do a roll call vote as well.
Planning Commissioner Roar?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Chair Graham?
Aye. So, that public hearing will be continued to our August twenty-fourth meeting. Next item on the agenda is the final plat for Gardens of Colonial Highlands. And Mr. Jury is going to make that presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Graham, uh, planning commissioners. Um, for you today is the applicant Tyler Sully on behalf of the property owner, Sully Real Estate Investments, is requesting final plat approval, um, for eleven point zero eight bout acre, uh, thirty-four lot subdivision, generally located at the southeast, or southeast of the intersection of Southwest Major Road and Tennessee Drive. Um, this application is requesting approval of the second and final phase of, uh, the col, or the gardens at Colonial Highlands, um, project. Um, the first phase is directly south of the second phase, um, shown here on the aerial. Um, staff did determine that the proposed final plat is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat and concept plan and final plan. Um, the staff does recommend approval with five conditions. Um, I will briefly go over, uh, the details of the project, um, and, and how it exactly is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. Um, so, for final plat, uh, final plat, uh, review criteria, uh, typically consists, or mainly consists of two general ideas. Um, one, that the subdivision layout, road network, uh, matches the preliminary plat, the concept plan, final plans that have been approved previously. Um, and two, uh, that the developer improvements have been installed as required. And so, uh, this final plat, road, road network and, uh, lot layout does match, uh, the, uh, proposed preliminary, or the approved preliminary plat, uh, as well as the concept and final plans that have been approved. And so, it is, uh, this layout is acceptable, um, when compared to that, uh, the previous approvals. As for the, uh, development improvements required of the developer, uh, this is the last phase, second and final phase. this is the last phase, second and final phase. So, all improvements should be installed prior to final plat approval as conditioned on the preliminary plat. The, one of the staff conditions recommended tonight is that all public works improvements, so roads, sidewalks, stormwater, and water sewer improvements are installed and completed prior to final plat approval by council. The open space requirements that are required as part of this plat include the trails and landscaping and ground cover in the open spaces on this, on this final plat. There's an open space in the northwest corner, as well as the south-central location. There's an open space there as well, with trails running through that, those two locations, and landscaping as well. The developer, I ran out today. The developer has installed part of the trails in this subdivision, but not all of them. And so, staff does recommend that prior to final plat approval by council, that the trail should be installed. As far as the landscaping and open space tracks, the developer did provide an escrow for the required landscaping remaining in the Gardens at Colonial Highlands subdivision as a whole. They're, they are asking that, rather than requiring that before final plat approval from councils, they are asking that that be postponed until August, or October 31st, due to weather. And since it's summer, it's harder to plant and keep plants alive during the summer. And so, staff, with the escrow that they have submitted, is willing to postpone the landscape installation on the open space tracks until October 31st, provided that we do have that financial guarantee provided by the developer, as well as the ability to require, on October 31st or after, we can withhold permits or occupancy on any remaining properties in this subdivision until the required landscaping is installed. The developer has agreed to this, these conditions in email conversations with them. And so, staff does recommend approval of the final plat for the second plat, Gardens at Colonial Highlands, with the five conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jury from the commissioners? Don't see any. Is the representative for the developer, would you like to make any comments? You don't need to be sworn in. Nope, you're good. Just state your name and address, please.
Dave Rennie with Schlegel, 14920 West 107th Street. And Nathan's report pretty much covered everything. Our plat's in compliance with the approved plan. We're in agreement with the stipulations listed in the staff report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from the commissioners? All right, don't see anything. All right. I would entertain a motion for approval. If someone would like to make...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat, for the Gardens at Colonial Highlands second plat, with the five staff conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hose. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I didn't need a roll call on this, sir. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we will send our recommendation of approval to the City Council for their August 17th meeting at 6:00. Item seven on the agenda is planned unit development, final plan, site plan design review for Jefferson Corner self-storage. And Mr. Wright's going to make that presentation for us this evening.
Yep, thank you, Chair and commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for a PUD final plan and site plan design review for Jefferson Corner self-storage, which is located at 651 Northeast Jefferson Street. The 5.39-acre property is located at the northwest corner of Northeast Jefferson and Northeast Adams Area Road, and is zoned RC-PUD-RO, which is regional commercial, with a planned unit development and restricted overlay. The PUD concept plan for the proposed development was approved by the City Council on July 6th, and the PUD final plan is in substantial compliance with that concept plan that was previously approved. The applicant is proposing to develop four self-storage buildings, each under, just under 12,000 square feet. On the site plan here, north is to the right. Jefferson Street is on the left side, and Northeast Adams Area Road, which is the east boundary of the property, is on the bottom of the screen. Each building will contain 10 units for a total of 40 units on site. Unlike traditional storage residential warehouse developments, the unit sizes are much larger and are more likely to attract small businesses and contractors for their storage needs, including storage of supplies and limited operations. As part of the PUD concept plan, there were two modifications that were approved. The first was to increase the maximum parking from 10 spaces to 55, and to eliminate the west landscape buffer within the shared access easement along the west property line. The site plan does meet all other applicable development standards, including setbacks, building coverage, and height. A final landscape plan has been provided, and it does show that the site does meet the minimum landscaping requirements, and has actually provided almost twice the amount of plant units that are required at 3,174 units, compared to a little over 1,700 units that are required. New landscaping will be, will be installed along Northeast Jefferson Street, as well as in areas adjacent to the new buildings and parking areas. Existing trees along Northeast Adams Area Road, as well as much of the northern portion of the property will remain in the natural vegetative state, which does include numerous mature trees. As mentioned, the site plan does include four single-story buildings, each with 10 units. For the architecture, each unit will include an overhead door and pedestrian door with awnings and clear-story windows for added height and visual interest. On the front elevation, this is the building closest to Jefferson Street. The overall design does give the appearance of an office building rather than a storage building. The building that backs to Adams Area Road will also be given some additional attention to detail on the backside of it, that will be visible from Adams Area Road. Rather than having pedestrian doors, however, since this is the backside of the building, they will add windows in place of that, and still keep the upper level clear-story windows to give the appearance of a two-story building. And lastly, the, the middle two buildings, which are this, in the middle and the northwest corner of the site, will be a little bit more dressed down because they are not visible from anywhere off-site. And the back wall will be blank because the two walls back up to each other, so there will not be any activity on the backside of those buildings. For materials, the applicant is proposing a mix of insulated metal panels with a stucco texture finish and manufactured stone. I think that shows up best in the front elevation here. There's two full, full-story sections of the masonry, and then everything else that you see is the stucco texture panel. The applicant has provided a sample, which is up against the podium in front of you, to show what that would look like. The approved concept plan only required the front and sides of the front building to be stucco and masonry veneer, while allowing all of the other buildings to be a metal panel. A condition of approval for the concept plan stated that final architectural elevations and exterior design details must be submitted and approved with the final plan, which is before you this evening, and that the design of materials must be equal to or better than the design of materials provided with the concept plan. It should be pointed out, and I have the images with me in case the Planning Commission needs to see them, that the building images of a similar development that were provided with the concept plan do appear to show the insulated metal panels with the stucco texture finish, but it was not labeled as such on the building elevations that were provided with the concept plan, which had it called out as stucco. And the Planning Commission must determine if the final proposed building materials are equal to or better than the concept plan. And again, I can bring those up if needed, but otherwise, staff does recommend approval of the PUD final plan, site plan design review with eight conditions. And then, and then we do have the, the metal panel here as well. If we need to bring that up to the commission, we can.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Wright? Okay. Is the applicant, if you'll, if you'd like to make your presentation, I just need you to state your name and address, please.
My name is Ron Mather, 27151 West 108th Street, Alatha, Kansas. So, what's before you tonight is four, like he said, four storage buildings. They're totally different than typical mini warehouse. Our typical tenant is a, has some sort of a home business or business outside the home, and they just need a place to store materials and tools. So, this is a, what, what you see on the screen is a, is this exact panel. It's a, it's a scrap from that job. And it sort of looks like a precast building. Precast, the seams would be every eight foot, these are every four foot. And it has a textured and embossed finish. So, the advantage of this product is it's got a really high insulation value. It's about a R16 and some change. So, the tenants seem to like that. All of these units will be heated and cooled. And we tried to make the front of the building look more like an office building to dress it up. So. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mather and the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Mather, why do you place restrooms in each of the units?
A lot of these people come from home, and they pick things up, and it's just a convenience. The project up here on the screen has, had about six restrooms. And those units were about $50 to $75 a month more. And they seemed to be pretty popular.
Paul, with the second question is, do you foresee businesses running out of these units?
Yes. Well, it's typically a contractor that really runs the business out of the house, but he'd like to get his garage back. And so, it typically, you know, one of the catalysts, if they buy a new car, his wife wants to park the car in the garage, not outside, because it's full of his stuff, or her stuff. Rent quite a few of them to women. But, so, they rent, they lease one of these, they get their garage back, and they're still gonna run their business out of their home. Or in some cases, they run it out of a pickup truck and a laptop.
Okay, so, if I understand you correctly, you don't see point of sale occurring in these units?
No. Well, no. Not really. It's, it's not a retail establishment. There's no storefront. The doors you see here, that's just for looks, to make it, to make it look more like a, a business. But, in, in all the ones I have currently, there's, there's no retail transactions.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So.
Thank you, sir.
And one other thing, we want a lot more parking than what's required. When people come out to look, whether it be residential or commercial, if they can see a parking problem, they're less apt to wanna be there. And so, typically, I, I like to put in about one and a half times the required parking. And if, if I don't need it, that's okay. But if I do need it, that's, that's a blessing.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Banks.
Sir, I wondered, since it's supposed to be storage buildings, do you have any restrictions on them placing their business on the door? The, I guess you're gonna put the unit number somewhere, and they can put their business, and if, since they can use their cellphone, they could actually put an office in there, and they can transact business out of that unit. So, I'm looking at storage unit, office.
Yeah, none of them have any office space.
Well, they can put a desk, right?
Well, they could put a desk on a concrete floor, I guess. But, uh, we label each door with the address.
Okay.
So.
But you don't have restrictions on them putting their business name on it?
Yeah, any signage's gotta be approved by us. This most recent one, none of the tenants have signs on the doors. So, on, on some of our other more traditional office warehouses, to control that, we have our own sign machine, and, and we make a, a two-inch sign and put it on, on the door for them.
Okay.
And then, it's just like you see on shops all around town. But, no, we don't want the building all logoed up with a bunch of signs.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Mather?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to ask a question to the staff.
Sure.
Mr. Wright is, if I remember correctly, is, I think you referred to possible starter businesses in this location?
Yeah, that's, that is part of how the restricted overlay was, was addressed. And, and the, the main reason for that is we have a lot of home occupations that may outgrow, outgrow the home, or they may end up being out of compliance with the home occupations, and this is a location where they could go. An example was, was just the other, last week, we received a license for a food truck, and we asked them where they were going to, to park that. Since they can't park that in their driveway, they said that they were going to a storage facility. So, that's, that's an example of, of a small business where they may be able to store their vehicle here, that's not allowed at their home, as well as some of the supplies and materials. They wouldn't necessarily, like a food truck wouldn't be turning this into a kitchen, but they could store their materials and then take it off-site to prepare it. So, that's one example of the type of business that this, these, these types of facilities would serve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you, Chair.
And, and if I may address the signage question, they would be limited, the amount of signage they would have under the sign code as well. So, we have restrictions in place on that.
But they could still, like, sit one up in the window inside. That wouldn't be a restriction, would it?
They, yes, they could. We don't have as many restrictions on the interior of, for signage, but as, in terms of putting a bunch of signage on the exterior of the walls, there would be restrictions on that. Yeah, and we require the property owner to sign off on any exterior signage anyway. So, if the property owner doesn't intend to do that, they, if somebody, if we get one and it's not signed by the property owner, we would not approve that permit without their permission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you, sir. I don't, they don't have any questions for you.
Thank you. I'd like to add.
Sure.
Your, the staff was great to deal with.
All right, thank you.
And I'm used to dealing with mostly Johnson County staff.
Oh.
It was, it was refreshing.
All right, we appreciate that. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
Before I make a motion, I can see that there could be a need for this in Blue Spring, because there are people that do home shops that don't have enough room. And we, they kind of get in trouble sometimes. And so, on that condition, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the planned unit development, PUD final plan, site plan, design review, with the eight staff conditions. PUDS-07-20-7403 with the eight staff conditions.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Banks for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, was that Commissioner Roar?
Yes.
So I have a sec, uh, any other discussion on the motion? So the motion is for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Peel.
All right. So that motion carries and that doesn't go to City Council, does it?
No.
So that passes. All right, next item on the agenda is election of officers. And again, in light of our light attendance tonight, I would like to see a motion to request a continuance to our next meeting if someone would be inclined.
Mister Chair, I'll finish the me- uh, I'd like to make a motion since there aren't as many of us here tonight to, uh, move the election of officers to August twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting.
All right, I have a motion to continue the election of officers to our next meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we will do officer elections at our next meeting. That brings us to item nine, other business. Mister Mallon, any other business?
Um, no real other, well, no, um, significant other business. I would just like to point out that we do have a number of items scheduled uh, for the August twenty-fourth Planning Commission evening, um, prior to tonight's continuances of the, of the, um, the Unified Development Code text amendment for conditional use permits, uh, that will add to that. So we will have, um, fifteen items before you, uh, that evening for seven different projects. Um, so, um, wide variety of projects, uh, from small residential up to, uh, large distribution, uh, centers. So, uh, we'll promise to be a fun-filled night and, uh.
I just can't have popcorn and sodas with my mask on, though.
It's, it's more difficult, that's correct, yes. Uh, but, you know, we will make sure that the candy jars are full.
All right, any other business from the commissioners? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peel to adjourn. How about a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
I think it was trash, you know. I mean, he said it was a scrap. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to see if I can get to my daughter's little performance before it gets over. Well, it's, her acro team was doing, since they didn't get to compete, they're doing an open house and we're sitting in the car and it's, we get to go in and watch and then leave. Yes.